Council is called to order at 6:08. I'm going to have, uh... I'm gonna have Diane. Diane, can you please help us with the Pledge of Allegiance? And Mr. Treasurer, could you help us with the invocation, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Could everybody please bow their heads? We just want to pray for a great meeting, a great, honest meeting, doing what's best for the city and the people of this great city. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoping everyone is doing well today. Thank you all for being here in person and those people that are watching on their phones, I guess because everybody can watch it from a phone, they're watching on TV, or will watch it later, okay? Through social media. So, Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Councilmember Montero.
President.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Our first item tonight is a presentation. Councilmember Valentine has Susan Shelley in talking about the effects of Proposition 19.
Yes, would you please come to the podium, Ms. Shelley?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much.
Susan Shelley is Vice President of Communications for the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, the most influential taxpayer advocacy group in California. She's also a columnist and editorial writer for the Southern California News Group, 11 daily papers, including the Orange County Register, the South Bay Daily Breeze, and the L.A. Daily News. Susan's a frequent guest on Southern California radio and TV news and interview shows, and she's the co-host of the Howard Jarvis Podcast for KABC. Ms. Shelley, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for inviting me. I'm here to talk about Proposition 19. May I take this off?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Lucky to be able to hear me. I'm here to talk about Proposition 19, which passed in 2020 very narrowly and has changed property transfers between parents and children in a very significant way. And it's really important for a city council like yourself to be aware of how this affects small businesses, how this affects rental property, and how this affects families in California. Prior to Prop 19, the law in California from 1986 forward allowed parents to transfer to their children, or the other way around, a home of any value, their principal residence of any value, and up to $1 million of assessed value of other property. And that was perhaps a duplex, a small apartment, maybe a vacation cabin, maybe a small business property like a restaurant or something of that sort, where families had invested year after year, maybe for two generations, and acquired a little bit of property. And under Prop 58 from 1986, which by the way was put on the ballot by the legislature unanimously, a unanimous vote in Sacramento put that on the ballot, and it passed with 75% support in California in 1986. What it said was, parents can transfer a home of any value and up to $1 million of assessed value of other property to their children without reassessment. And now it's gone. Prop 19 took it away and replaced it with a very limited and capped exclusion. A home can be transferred without reassessment with a cap only if the child moves into it and makes it their principal permanent residence within one year. So if someone passes away and the house passes to the child, the child has one year to drop everything and move into it and fill out the homeowner's exemption and make it their principal residence, or it is reassessed to market value. Market value in California, for a home that's been owned for 20 years, 30 years, even five years, market value is much higher, and the property tax bill is 1% of market value, plus bonds and local parcel taxes and that sort of thing. This is unaffordable, so people are being forced to sell family property. There's an exclusion, as I said, if the child moves into the home within one year, it is capped at $1 million above the current taxable value. So in many neighborhoods, in Los Angeles, in the Bay Area, in San Diego, that's not enough, and there's a huge tax increase anyway. And kids, even if they move into the home, are forced to sell it because they can't afford the property taxes. With regard to business properties or small apartment buildings, no exclusion at all. Upon transfer to the children, reassessed to market value. Well, what happens to the tenants? If the building's under rent control and the rent can't be raised to cover this new property tax bill, then it's very likely that that building will be sold. The new owners can't make it pencil out as a rental property either, so it's very likely it will be sold and turned into something other than housing. Proposition 19 could wipe out half the affordable housing in California in one generation. 55% of apartment units in California are owned by mom and pop landlords, and when those properties are passed to the children, reassessed to market value. So this is having a very significant effect on families. Trusts do not protect you from property taxes. This has caused problems for the assessors because they have to send out letters and notify people that they must fill out the forms, fill out the homeowner's exemption, or they will be reassessed. And there's no going back from it. So the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association is interested in repealing this portion of Prop 19. There was another portion that involved transfers of your base year property value to a new home if you chose to move. That we're not looking at at all. We're only interested in repealing this death tax provision and restoring Proposition 58 to the state constitution so that once again, parents can pass property to children without reassessment. So we did not collect enough signatures on our first try within the 180 days that were allotted. We're looking at every possibility of going forward for 2024, and the Board of Directors will consider that in the coming months. So thank you, and I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Anyone?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Shelley. So I wanted, because we're very interested in trying to preserve homeownership in this city. So this is very impactful as far as our city residents are concerned. I wanted to ask you, what can the residents do proactively while, you know, before they are ready to pass their property on to their children, if they want to do that?
There really isn't anything. As I said, a trust does not help you. If you own enough property to put into an LLC to pay the corporate fee and the legal fees and the tax returns every year, an LLC with good legal advice, it's very complicated, can protect you from property tax increases in these circumstances. But under normal circumstances, family property will be reassessed, and there's nothing anyone can do about it except stay healthy and not die.
And this goes both ways, right? Parent to child, child to parent?
Exactly.
All right.
Yes. And it, once transferred, you can't get it back again.
Do you have any information as to what is happening now as a result of Prop 19? How this has impacted already in the state?
Well, the numbers are still coming in. I understand the Board of Equalization has just released today some Prop 19 numbers, but I haven't had an opportunity to review them yet. But certainly, this is going to have an impact on families. Many families have invested in a little bit of real estate. They've taken some of their wages as they've worked through the years, and they bought one rental property. Or they bought two houses and they wanted to give one to each child. Well, only the principal residence of the parent is eligible for the transfer exclusion, so the second house is reassessed to market value. So everybody's plans that they had made over 30 years for how they were going to take care of the next generation, out the window. And really, there's not a lot that anyone can do about it, except repeal it. So I encourage everyone to go to hjta.org and sign up for email alerts, and we'll keep you posted on what we're doing on that.
hjta.org?
Right. Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, hjta.org.
Do you have any named supporters, as far as you know, in the legislature that's supporting the repeal?
To my knowledge, no. The legislature, there may be some who have endorsed it. I'm not certain, but in general, the legislature wanted this tax increase. They wanted it. And they worked a deal with the California Association of Realtors to make it part of the portability initiative, and that's how it got to the ballot. And in general, we were hopeful that the legislature would want to fix some of this. They have not been responsive to this point.
Go ahead.
To the chair, thank you. So having said that, with regards to the state legislature, there's no votes then to overturn it? Right. There is ACA 9, which would be a constitutional amendment which would overturn it, but they refused to give it a hearing. So that is active still through the rest of this session. So how many signatures? It takes, for this cycle for 2022, the number needed was 997,139 valid signatures of registered voters. And we collected in a couple of months about 402,000 and change. It's a steep learning curve, and we made a lot of progress in educating the voters about what Prop 19 did. Because one of the things that many people will tell you is they didn't even know about this. They didn't, they thought Prop 19 was about wildfire victims. They had no idea there was a death tax in it that affected their family. And as they're finding out, sadly, by losing someone and getting this letter, which comes with the sympathy cards saying you're going to be reassessed, 1% of current market value, as they get the letter, they're calling us, and they're calling the assessors, and they're calling the Board of Equalization, and they're calling everyone they can think of to try and figure out how they can deal with this. And there's no answer except to change the Constitution back and put Prop 58 back in the Constitution. So you mentioned it's an educational effort? Right. And that's something that your organization continuously is working on, doing? Yes. How are you doing the outreach? What are you doing? Well, when we were collecting signatures, we did radio advertising, we did flyers, we did interviews and articles, and we will do all of that again when we gear up to try again for 2024, if the board makes the decision that that's the best way forward. So I anticipate that you will see, once again, a lot of interviews, articles, radio ads, flyers, word of mouth, email blasts. We will do everything we can think of. We welcome resolutions of support from city councils. We welcome endorsements of the effort from public officials. We think this is extremely important. Of all the taxes to be raised, property taxes on families that have just lost a loved one, it's just cruel. It's just cruel. And when people have spent their whole lives accumulating just a little bit of property to give to their kids, so life will be a little easier for them, to take that away. And then, once it's sold, yes, the kids have the money when it's sold, but the money loses value to inflation, the asset appreciates, and somebody else owns it. And that's just unacceptable. I'd be willing to lend my support. Thank you. I get it. And if we take it up as a cause, I don't know if we might want to do that.
I would like to do that, yes.
Let's discuss that at the end of the conclusion of our council so that we could take up a discussion. Thank you, Councilmember. Much appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, well, obviously, somebody has to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Right.
I think it's just kind of unfortunate. You know, I guess they're trying to look for money wherever they can, but I guess it'd be wiser if they kind of controlled what they spend so that they don't have to be put in these situations where, up in Sacramento, so that they don't have to just tax everything. We have to have taxes, but not like, what do you call it, ad nauseam?
Ad nauseam is exactly right. Should be our slogan.
Thank you once more, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Thanks for inviting me.
Our second presentation has been pulled. Councilwoman Valentine will explain.
Yes. Unfortunately, the young lady who received the scholarship from the Holly Park Neighborhood Association is not able to be here tonight, so we're going to have to postpone that to another evening.
Do you want to skip it in its entirety? Do you want to mention her name or just wait till she shows?
Well, I don't know exactly when she's going to come. I think we're going to try and arrange something for maybe the next council meeting, although I won't be here. I think we're going to try and arrange something to have her come in, or have her come in, or have a video presentation. Something will be arranged.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Now it's time for oral communications. Madam Clerk.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. James Raddick, please, sir. Mr. Raddick?
James Raddick, 3822 West 144th Street in Hawthorne. I'm here to talk about the charter change and what you guys did at the last special meeting. It's horrible. You are extorting the city people to pay for the charter change. If we don't vote yes on it, we lose. If we vote yes on it, you guys get a big pay raise. It says seven elected, is it seven elected officials that are going to get the $75,000 plus in pay raise? That sounds like extortion. We have to vote for it to get it, and it doesn't guarantee that the state will honor them. So we'd have to go to court, maybe. And you guys are going to get a big raise if we vote yes on it. So we're stuck between voting yes or no, and that's a form of extortion, isn't it, Mr. Lawyer? That's what extortion is. Pay me for something, and I might get it to you. And that's what we're getting, extortion. And I only get three minutes to speak, but at that meeting, one of the council persons sat there for about 10 minutes talking about how hard it is and how bad it is for working for the city as a council person with the low pay. Well, if you don't like the money, why do you keep running for office? You got voted out once, but you came right back. So if you don't like what you pay, get now, don't run for reelection. Very simple. Thank you very much.
Patricia Donaldson? Patricia Donaldson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I have two announcements. One is this coming Saturday night, August 13, is Casino Night. That's with the chamber, and we're going to have it at the Moose Lodge. It's a, we're both doing it together. It's going to be 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The taco lady will be there. There'll be a 50/50 drawing. There'll be door prizes, baskets, all kinds of goodies. So I hope that everyone can make it on this coming Saturday, August 13. And then September 26 is our eighth annual golf tournament, and that's going to be at Rio Hondo. And that's going to, registration's going to be at 11:00, and there'll be a continental breakfast. 12:00 noon is shotgun with a box lunch. There'll be five $100 door prizes. There will be a $250 cash prize for the longest drive, $250 cash prize for the closest to the pin. There will be a 2022 Mustang for a hole-in-one. There'll be 50/50 drawing, and there'll be a lot of baskets and a lot of prizes and money. So I hope that all of you, and then there'll be a dinner, a buffet dinner at 5:30 PM, and that's at the Rio Hondo, September 26. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Raymond Vergara?
Sounds like fun, Patricia. Unfortunately, I don't know how to golf. So Raymond Vergara here, 4922 West 120th Street, small business owner, homeowner, and 22-year resident of Hawthorne. I just want to talk about the last two meetings that you guys had, and I just want to be clear because I'm still getting residents that are not understanding what's going on. But currently, there is no cannabis shops in the city of Hawthorne. The city council has not voted for marijuana shops, permits, or ordinances. But yet, I'm embarrassed that the same three city council members continue to support marijuana retail in Hawthorne. Only two city council members have had the courage to ask the tough questions, and again, here I am, being the voice of reason. I don't know if you guys have amnesia, or you guys are broken. I know it sounds comical, but you guys think that the citizens of Hawthorne don't know what's going on. I don't know if you guys have forgotten the 124 signatures, wet signatures that we collected from the residents of Hawthorne opposing cannabis of any kind to the city. I don't know if you've forgotten about the printing of the misleading flyer on cannabis on all the residents to see, and how you continue to parade in these marijuana ad hoc meetings, pushing your agenda, yet no members of the community share your decision-making. And then I also want to talk about how secretly a contract was negotiated with Ebony McGee of EJMA Planning and Development, Inc., who, by the way, is also COO, Chief Operating Officer of Josephine &amp; Billy's, a dispensary in south-central Los Angeles. Furthermore, no one is talking about the scam that your consultant, Ebony McGee, was mentioned in the Los Angeles Times article, is outside cannabis money influencing Commerce City Council race, where three city council members were the driving force behind the decision to bring cannabis to the city. Sounds familiar? We know what's going on, and make no mistake about it, the feds are watching. I echo the city council enthusiasm about election coming. I too have those same feelings, but I just want to let you know that if you guys are threatened, our way of life, and I just want to say that those convicted city council members care more about corruption and bribery than protecting, nurturing, and being the voice of reason for the city residents of Hawthorne. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Form a line. If we're going to speak, form a line now, just so we can get an idea who is going to speak. Okay? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everyone. Name is Gordon Michael Migo, native, resident of Hawthorne since October 8, 1952. U.S. Senator Ron Johnson of Wisconsin held Senate Committee hearings on January 24th, 2022. Project CELLUS, C-E-L-L-U-S, U.S. Military Defense Epidemiology Database. Testimony by whistleblowers from the Defense Department, Lieutenant Colonel Teresa Long, Lieutenant Colonel Peter Chambers, and Samuel Segaloff, and testimony also by legal expert Thomas Renz, R-E-N-Z, attorney for America's Frontline Doctors. Subject COVID shots, that is so-called vaccines, by Pfizer, Moderna, and so on administered under mandate to 600,000 members of the U.S. Military who encountered adverse effects, quite a number of them severe, that increased the rate of health problems above the normal average, you know, affecting their health. Breast cancer was up 473%. Cancer of all types, up 296%. Genetic mutations up 400%. Hypertension up 2,142%. Infertility up 472%. Miscarriages up 279%. Myocarditis, heart problems, 527% increase. Neurological, 1,000% increase. Pulmonary lungs, that is, 300% increase. Now, my commentary, I believe it's absolutely outrageous and reprehensible that men and women of the U.S. Military are being subjected to the COVID-19 drugs, which have questionable efficacy and safety for their health, as well as the effects on the overall state of readiness of our military forces. We must follow real medical science. It is far past time to abolish the vaccine mandates and the punitive measures that have been employed, which never should have been implemented in the first place by elected officials and appointed bureaucrats who do not respect the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights of our nation, and don't really follow real medical science. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Katrina Manning, 11703 Wilkie Avenue. I haven't been here in quite some time. It is so great to see your faces tonight. I am currently the Director, Board of Directors for Northeast Community Clinic, and I just wanted to make an announcement that they're having free COVID vaccine for children six months and older on 4455 West 117th Street. You can go there any day of the week, and they're giving out free masks and free COVID shots for children six months and older. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Looks like this is the final speaker. If anybody else was going to speak, we'd, we would like to have seen you lined up, but okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Leatris Tanner-Brown. I live at 11923 Cedar Avenue. My husband and I have been there a long time, since 1994. I am here this evening because of the, some information I have heard that the city of Hawthorne is considering marijuana dispensaries in our precious city. My husband and I are completely opposed to this, and I beg of you, please reconsider. We don't need this in our city. I have a letter here that my husband and I have written, that I would like to read and leave here for you. The City Council is no stranger to me. I've been here many, many times, and I'm a longtime member. We are longtime members of this city and longtime members of St. Joseph's Parish. And I appreciate what you've done, but I'm very, very angry about thinking about marijuana dispensaries in our precious little city. It makes me sick. I am a recovered, recovering alcoholic. On August 14th, I will be celebrating 45 years of sobriety. And my husband is also a recovering alcoholic, who has been sober for many years. It's nothing to see us standing at Birch, on Birch Avenue, helping other alcoholics to recover. We have a grandson who is a chronic alcoholic and weed addict, and other family members who have also been afflicted. I would like to read this letter and leave it here for you to reconsider. Please do not put weed dispensaries in our city. We do not need them. We do not want them, and we are completely opposed to them. And I know I stand on behalf of the pastors of St. Joseph's and many members of St. Joseph's. To the Honorable Mayor Alex Vargas and the esteemed City Council members of Hawthorne, we are writing this letter regarding the establishment of marijuana dispensaries in the city of Hawthorne. Our entire family, once again, is opposed to the establishment of such dispensaries in our precious city. We are longtime members of St. Joseph's Catholic Church and have lived at 11923 Cedar Avenue since 1994. We are also members of the Fellowship, as I said, of Alcoholics Anonymous for over four decades. We frequent the businesses in this city and can be seen, seen any weekend at our parish of St. Joseph's, and also at the local AA meeting on Birch. I was just there last night, and I love it. I save, help save lives by the grace of God, as they did for me. We have many family members who have been negatively affected by drugs and alcohol. And marijuana is one of the things, drugs of choice, that I used to love when I was doing what I was doing almost 45 years ago. We feel that recommended, we feel that we have recommended the establishment of these dispensaries will be very, very detrimental. I will not read all of this. My time is out, but I would like to leave this city, this letter, and say, please do not put marijuana dispensaries in our city. We are totally opposed, along with many others. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello. My name is Roger White. I'm Leatris' husband. We live at 11923 Cedar Avenue. I've had extensive experience with marijuana as a veteran, Vietnam veteran. Extensive marijuana use will induce psychosis. I'm one of the people who was doing this. We were smoking marijuana through gun barrels, machine gun barrels. And what would happen is you become psychotic, and then you started killing everything in sight. It will induce psychosis, and I don't want anybody that's using this stuff around. This stuff that they're putting out now is much stronger than what was, we were experiencing over there. And we had people doing strange things, like jumping off of bridges into snake-infested rivers, shooting up entire villages of people, shooting themselves. See, they had gunfights between Army units and Marine units. They're high. Everybody over there was high. You have no idea of the horror stories that you, you're allowing to come into our city. So when you get some guy who goes in the Ralph's Market over there and shoots up everybody because he's high off of weed, it's on your head. Thank you.
If there's no one further, I declare oral communications closed, so ordered. Madam Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have six items on the consent calendar. They are items three through eight for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waivers of full, of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item five, approval of the City Council minutes for the special meeting of December 7, 2021, and the regular meetings of January 11, 2022, and January 25, 2022. Item six, Resolution Number 8373 and 8374. Consideration of resolutions pertaining to a measure concerning adoption of a charter at the November 8, 2022 election, including Resolution Number 8373 ordering submission to the voters of a measure concerning the proposal to adopt a charter pursuant to California Government Code Section 34458B, and find the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and Resolution 8374, directing preparation of an impartial analysis and setting forth a procedure for submitting arguments for and against the charter measure. Item seven, Resolution 8375, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving a side letter agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne Executive Group, amending the memorandum of understanding for July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024, and amending Chapter 2.32 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, authorizing the city manager to execute the side letter agreement. Item eight, Resolution Number 8376, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the City of Gardena regarding paratransit services for fiscal years 2022 to 2023, and 2023 to 2024.
I'd like to pull number six for discussion.
Granted. I make a motion on all other items, with the exception of six.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects the mayor and council voting yes.
Discussion. Six.
Thank you. In principle, I am not opposed to the idea of creating a city charter based on its potential to provide the city with more autonomy and local control. I say "potential" because the state laws that have mandated housing have specifically stated that the matters were of statewide concern, removing the city's ability to prevent their application. However, my principal objection is to the size of the compensation package for several reasons. First is uncertainty. The economy is going into a recession, as well as continuous, as well as continuous raises in interest rates. It has already started and will continue. This is a bad time to make such a decision, because the future cannot be predicted, and we must be ready to deal with an emergency that the city may face. Second, according to the California Capitol dated July 31, 1920, 2022, 2022, PERS is facing a $29 billion shortfall because of a hit to the system's portfolio of investments. This means that it is likely that the cities will be on the hook for the deficit, and will be receiving the bill within one or two years. Three, we have not created the streams of revenue which would support such a salary increase. We are not Inglewood, and we are not Carson. This will impact the ability to hire new staff at a time when new staff is an imperative. Accordingly, my proposal is to amend Exhibit B as follows. Section 201 compensation. All members of the City Council, including the mayor, shall receive as total compensation for their services, a monthly salary which will be set at $2,000 for a yearly salary of $24,000 for each council member. I move that, I move the amendment to Exhibit B, to include those words.
I second that.
Yes.
The main item on the ballot is item six in its entirety.
We have Mr. Davis Snow present.
I know, but they're making a motion for a specific...
And Mr. Snow will address that question.
A specific amendment to it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Dave Snow, the law firm of Richard Swatson-Gershon. I think it would be within the council's authority to direct a modification to that resolution and that exhibit, to make the modification. Again, this is an item that that was discussed previously. It's a reduction in the salary. I don't think it presents something that is new beyond what was contemplated in other, in prior conversations. So I think it would be within the authority of the council, should it choose, to make that modification to Exhibit B. And if, if, if the council did that, then it would be adoption of the resolution in chief as amended.
Mr. City Attorney, can this be done through consensus?
It could, it should be done by a vote. It requires majority vote.
The amendment aspect?
Yes. Yes. In order to, basically, how Councilmember Valentine has worded this, is to make it pending the changes that she requested, which Mr. Snow has responded that it can be done. That is not big enough of a change to require a new public hearing format.
All right. Any other comments?
I have a question. I have a question with regards to some of the Jarvis Act tax changes. Can anything be done if, say, for instance, it goes forward and there's a charter change? Can we, as local control at that point, correct, can we implement something that would assist in efforts to not support currently, what is it, Prop, Prop 19? Can, can we change something up ourselves if we have that charter to do that?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray Zinglish. I don't believe that the City Council, even with a charter, would have the authority to do that because of the statewide nature of that with preemption, matters of statewide concern. There are other tax measures that the city could look at that might be able to be designed to address some of those issues, but that, I believe, would be preempted.
Okay, so at this point, we, we wouldn't know that. It would have to be furthered?
Well, again, I believe with respect to that particular measure, which was a statewide measure, that that would be, the city would be...
It would, that would have precedent over the, the change.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's a, so there's a, go ahead and repeat your motion, please. Or can you summarize their motion, Mr. City?
The motion is Section 201 compensation to read. I'm sorry, one moment, please.
While you're looking for that, can I, I have one other question.
Well, let's let her finish that.
Okay.
Let's just...
All members of the City Council, including the mayor, shall receive as total compensation for their services, a monthly salary which will be set at $2,000 for a yearly salary of $24,000 for each council member.
Okay. Is there a comment from you?
And I second the motion.
And I, may I just clarify, there's, there's additional text there. Would the remainder of Section 201 stay in place, or would that be deleted?
No, the remainder would stay as, say the same.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, go ahead, and then you go ahead, sir.
Do we have Department of Finance here? Is there someone from Finance?
No, currently Felice is on vacation. So no, I don't have anyone from Finance here right now.
Because I think we, we need to have Finance give us, like, a breakdown of what that looks like, as far as the proposal where there's no revenue stream. I want to hear from Finance on whether or not that's, that's in fact. The reason I say this is because from the last presentation we had on budget, and from the last conversations we had from former, from previous meetings, we were told that there isn't an effect to the, to the budget.
The, if I may, through the chair, the fiscal impact is also on this resolution. If, if the charter was not amended and we kept the salary as previously council had voted, the fiscal impact is at the page three or four.
Page three or four.
So with the Councilwoman Valentine's motion to change the, that provision, it would be drastically reduced from that amount. But we have the, the cost with the county for putting on the charter measure would be $40,000 and change, and the annual fiscal impact of the salary would be, including the effects of the benefits and discount... and discount, what was already agreed to in terms of salary for council members by ordinance of 1,200 per month, the net effect would be an increase of 471,704 annually to the budget.
Right, okay.
That was not budgeted, no, so that's why we're.
So it'd be additional four, 4,000?
400,000.
May I put two? Yeah, I mean, I appreciate everybody making a voice heard on the subject and, and council member making a proposal. I would have hoped that, I guess a more robust discussion on the subject would have happened at the last meeting on this topic. I think, you know, there was a discussion about it and there was a motion to make an amendment. I made a motion to make a amendment to reduce it and I believe it passed. So it seems that this is just some continued attempt to, you know, of course, have, have one's particular way even after, you know, their position's not been adopted in the past. But I definitely respect everybody's, you know, positioning and taking the time to kind of voice their, their, you know, their recommendation and their position though. I think that's why we have these in open forums, we can vote on it. But I believe that we've kind of established our position on a particular subject at the last meeting where we discussed this, but I'm more than willing to vote again about it.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, then I'll go next.
Okay, I just want to remind my colleagues when Ms. Felice Lopez presented the budget, the budget for 2023, we had just a surplus of 200 and something thousand dollars. So it was almost dead even. So if we add 470,000 on the, on the budget, if, if the charter goes the way it is and pass, and if the council receives 75,700 a year, we will have a deficit spending at the end of June 30, 2022 of 270,000. That's it, the reality. So we will know, we would have a deficit spending. The budget will not be a surplus of 200 something thousand dollars like Ms. Felice Lopez presented about a month ago. So that is my concern, that, that like I said, in the beginning, I was in favor of the charter because of the state legislature, of all these bills that they're passing, you know, interfering in our capability of regulate our own zoning and land use. But when it comes down to the compensation, that is when I withdraw my support for it. Because I said, if the city would have maybe half a billion dollar in reserve, then I would say, let's go for it. But we only have 70 million dollar in reserve and that is just basically one year of our operation budget. So that is my concern.
Okay, through the chair. I just want to make one comment.
Then I'll go, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, item, item number 16 amendment to a contract that we currently have dramatically reduces how much we're paying that particular contractor by probably 400,000 or so. So the reality of it is that we would have the same surplus next year if everything was equal. So just a matter of changing the way we spend and paying one particular contractor 400,000 or less, which we plan on already doing anyway, would give us the same surplus.
But we have not voted on that contract, don't we?
That's very true. I mean, of course, you can choose to vote to keep paying them a half a million dollars a year if you want to, but just hypothetically.
I'd just like to just address a couple of things. I'm sorry, then you'll, yes. So I appreciate the comments of my council colleagues. We're not a large city, we're a small city. We've always budgeted as a small city. We've always raised money as a small city. We've not created the streams of revenue that would support such a salary increase. We don't have, we're not, we're not big cities, we're not Inglewood, we're not Carson. We, this kind of increase will actually impact us. It will impact our ability to hire new staff. We need new staff. We need staff because we're short-staffed in almost all of our departments. And I am concerned about the uncertainty of the economy. If PERS, there is no question that PERS is facing a 29 billion dollar shortfall. PERS has always come to the cities to, to make up for whatever it's short. And I will expect that they, they will be billing us in the next couple of years for this 29 billion dollar shortfall. I have no idea how much it's going to be. We have, we're going, the economy is going into a recession. Interest rates are being raised. Our businesses are being slammed. We don't know what, what kind of shape our businesses are going to be in and what kind of revenue we're going to be facing in the next few years. I do believe that something like this is unnecessary. That's the reason I proposed a significant reduction. I think the compensation is unnecessary. I think that all of us, when we, when we, when we, when we ran for this office, we were making 600 a month. We knew that's all it was. And we ran anyway and we accepted it. I was perfectly fine with raising the amount to 1,200 a month. And I, and as I looked at it again, I thought, okay, I think we probably would be okay and it wouldn't create a big problem for us if we go to 2,000 a month. But that's as high as I would be willing to go because I really do feel that our city would be in danger of, of a severe impact if we went any higher than that.
All right. Yeah, all right. So thanks for, thanks for your guys' comments, et cetera, but there's just been a, I just wanted to repeat that, I don't know who's been kind of spreading this message, but that we are going to assign ourselves a specific salary and that's not the case. And a previous council meeting, not this last one, maybe the previous one, I kind of just pointed that out to the community that it's your decision whether we get the benefits of becoming a charter city, which would be, put us in a better position to protect ourselves from the state, a fighting chance to be able to push back, especially when it comes to some of these propositions and assembly bills and state senate bills that have been coming forth. And the compensation aspect has been placed in there as well as an adjustment. But as you've heard today, and I just repeated, maybe I've said it more aggressively in the past, my councilmember colleagues, all, all councilmember colleagues were comfortable with increasing the compensation salary. We've did it, we did it before, we did it in January. So everybody voted unanimously to increase the salary, double it. And so nobody was uncomfortable with that at that point, okay? If, we've been going through this COVID, suppose that if the impacts of COVID have been taking place, they were taking place back in January. So nobody showed that same concern back then. So now all of a sudden, I just feel that this, that there's a sudden concern for whatever reasons. I don't want to get into all that. Everybody's free to change their mind, but back then, people were willing to support it. And even at one of the council meetings that we discussed this, one of my council colleagues had asked, okay, can we change this, increase this amount later if we pass the charter? If we don't do it now, can we pass it later? So people are kind of in a position and disposed to increasing salaries. So nobody on the council right now can claim that they were ever against it because everybody voted against it and people were positioning themselves maybe to adjust it later. Okay? So based on what we're hearing then, so, and then today too, you have the proposed amendment, which I'm opposed to and I'm going to vote against it, where you say, okay, I'm comfortable in boosting my salary, boosting our salaries, but not to what you guys are asking, but to this amount. So it's whatever arbitrary amount in the people's minds. So people are, people here are disposed to, I don't know if that's the right word, are kind of, would be open to raising their salaries, period. So the thing is, we, and now you hear just like on the last day of the last vote to just, to adjust this to a specific amount. We've already gone through this. I would have invited, I would have been welcoming these ideas back. We've been talking about this since the beginning of the year. So it's been like six months at least. I think it would have been more, you know, it would have been more receptive. We could have debated it all at that time. But now it just kind of seems like something that possibly could be something to kind of either delay or, what you call it, stall or the whole charter cities concept as possible. Like I said, I trust in the residents that you guys could look at the information yourselves. I feel comfortable with the conversation we had with our city manager, said that we would be able to do this without impacting certain things. We have new revenue streams that are coming, some certain contracts that might not be existing, et cetera. So I'm just going to ask my councilmembers, colleagues to vote if they support this amendment that was made. Just let's just go ahead and move with that vote, first of all, and see where that goes. So we have a proposed amendment to adjust the salary compensation to 24,000. I'll personally be voting against that and just keep into the original thing.
Don't tell them how they're going to vote. They have to vote by themselves.
Oh, I can announce how I want to vote, councilmember.
We have a motion from Councilmember Valentine and a second from Councilmember Montero with respect to just changing the salary portion of the charter.
I can always say how I'm going to vote. It's a public meeting. We're not doing it behind the closed door, sir.
And the mayor has called for the vote.
So, so can you restate the, who's going to restate that just so everybody understands exactly what we're voting for?
Well, this is, the mayor has just stated that we're going to vote on the Councilwoman Valentine's proposal to change, motion to change the salary from the original amount in the charter down to 2,000 per month or 24,000 a year per the city council members. And that's what we're voting on right now, seconded by Councilmember Montero.
Okay, just go ahead.
The vote reflects Councilmember Valentine and Councilmember Montero voting yes and Councilmembers Patterson, Vargas, and Reyes English voting no.
So is anybody wishing to make the next motion on the actual?
I'll make a motion on, was it Resolution number six as written?
Was there a second? Seconded, made, a motion made and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects Councilmember Valentine and Montero voting no and Councilmembers Patterson, Reyes English, and Mayor Vargas voting yes.
All right, so just once more, we invite the residents to do their research, to put whatever considerations they want into this ballot measure, vote yes or no based on what you see as benefits or things that might not be, that you don't agree with, just kind of, just go with that, okay? I won't be making an argument for or against this. Okay, thank you. What else do we have? And thank you, councilmember colleagues, for a good debate on that or discussion on that, please, thank you. Okay.
Number nine, General Matters.
Yeah, I got it. Next, we have General Matters, Madam Clerk, nine.
Item nine, Housing Maintenance, 2022 Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties, Various Locations, City Project Number 22-06, Out to Bid. Recommended Motion. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the plans and specifications and authorize the Director of Public Works to advertise for construction bids with the return date of September 27, 2022.
I move.
Second. Please vote. That wasn't the vote for this one.
Each one individually?
Can you repeat the motion, please, one more time, Ms., just because you got distracted with that.
The recommended motion?
Yes, please.
Staff recommends that the City Council approve the plans and specifications and authorize the Director of Public Works to advertise for construction bids with the return date of September 27, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded by who? Who seconded that?
I did a second.
Okay, it was moved by Councilwoman English, right?
Yes.
And then seconded by Councilmember Montero. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms.
Thank you, real quick. City Manager, real quick, city-owned property that we just moved in and passed on item number nine, do we know how many units of housing are going to get rehabbed?
I mean, that's a, that's, this is a rehabilitation for all the city low-income properties, including the moderate-income properties. I believe for, it's a, the rehabilitation is needed for each of the units.
Right, do we know how many we're going to be rehabbing?
I know there is.
Thirty-four.
Five buildings?
Yeah, they're thirty-four units, five buildings, thirty-four units.
Five buildings, thirty-four units. And that's been, this is history in the making.
Yes, and the funding is actually coming from the donation from Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
Thank you so much.
Along with, along with certain grants that we have from the state PLHA grant from HCD and also home funds, which is a part of the HUD federal funding. So we have to mix all that up through the consultants to figure out how to pay for it.
And we didn't, we didn't put half a million also from the ARPA?
No, what we did is we found other grant sources before we go into ARPA money.
All right, fantastic, great, thank you.
Fine, I know it's going to be advertised widely, so if anybody's out there listening, construction companies who wanting to put a bid, submitted bid, please keep an eye out for that project that's going to be out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Congresswoman Waters. Let's give her a round of applause and thank her. She's stepping up for us always. Next, this is General Matters, item 10, Madam Clerk.
Item 10, Tree Treating Project, City Project Number 22-07, Out to Bid. Recommended Motion. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the plans and specifications and authorize the Director of Public Works to advertise for construction bids with the return date of September 13, 2022.
I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, yeah, I'll make the motion this time and then seconded by Councilwoman English. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
The city manager's consent calendar, and we just want to note that the city clerk's office is making these, is reading the items for the city manager for the efficiency sake and I guess, I guess it's protocols sake.
Right.
That's been established, I would say. Not that the city manager doesn't feel comfortable doing this, right, but, but just, just so you guys know why she's reading them, not the city manager. It's a protocol that was established, I think, from the state recommended, okay? Go ahead.
Item 11, Highway Safety Improvement Project, Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, City Project Number 21-06, Out to Bid. Item 12, Progress Payment Number One in the Amount of $308,545.75 due to Sequel Contractors, Inc. of Santa Fe Springs, California for Local Street Improvement Project 2022, Project Number 22-04. Item 13, Acting City Manager Appointments Pursuant to Hawthorne Municipal Code, Section Item 14, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. Item 15, Agreement Contract Renewal Between the City of Hawthorne and LDM Associates, Inc. for the Administration of the CD, BG, and, and Home Programs. Item 16, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and Telehealth Fund, LLC for Providing Daily Virtual Telehealth Resources and Family Support to Low-Income and Homeless Residents in the City. Item 17, City of Hawthorne Employee Handbook. Item 18, Recruitment Incentive Program for Current Sworn Employees. Item 19, Approval of Side Letter for Nakagawa Medical Director. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 11 through 19, please?
I move.
I'd like to pull number 14.
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, well, yeah, she kind of interjected in between somebody's second.
You can still continue with, yeah.
Yeah, so, second. Well, no, she's asking to pull something, so if she makes that request in between, just go ahead. What are they?
Yeah, number 14, the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. Now.
No, but was anybody else going to pull anything else?
No, that's it.
Yep. Okay, I'd like to, no. I'd like to, no, go ahead.
I have a concern about using American Rescue Act funds for emergency preparedness coordinator. Is that, first of all, I assume that's something that we are able to do based on the protocol of the, of the American Rescue Act? Is that something that we are able to use it for? That's my first question.
There's an option for that. As you do remember that we transferred a certain amount to the general fund from the last first payment, so there's different ways to coordinate the payment for this position.
Okay, my, my concern about it is that in future years, if they claw back those funds from the American Rescue Act, which there is a threat to do, because a lot of the money that was, money that was appropriated wasn't actually used and Congress is constantly threatening to claw back some of those funds. And I'm wondering, what would that, what position would that leave us in if we, if we use those funds and we have to, we have to send them back?
Well, my intention is to hire this position as a professional agreement contract. So the city would go as needed as far as the funding is available. I'm thinking moving forward that the city staff will work on grants to fulfill this position in the future if there's not funding available.
Okay. All right, so in that case, I would move to.
I'm going to, I'm going to pull 16, just so I could, we can get a presentation. Is Mr. Rambo here?
Yes, he is. Mr. Dino Rambo is sitting in the back.
So look, is anybody else going to pull anything else? No, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a new motion for item 11, 12, 13, 15, 17, 18 and 19.
Second.
Is voted on those?
Nope, I don't get it. I had made a motion already.
What was, what's proper protocol? Actually, it wasn't seconded.
Did you, did you just, I, I don't even recall who.
All right, look, so a motion was made, an interjection was made for a discussion. So that, that, that takes over any second that would be made.
So that was on number 14, as I recall.
No, no.
No, on all items.
All items, except the one that, the number 14 was pulled. So I made a motion. She could still discuss the item that she wants to discuss. There was a second by Patterson.
The second was made after.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so we could.
This motion pulled a second.
But I'd like to pull 16. I pulled it before the second was made, so yeah, we're, we're in the right. I'd like to hear from Mr. Rambo.
I said the motion, I said the motion so that she pulled her item, so she pulled her item to discuss it. You're pulling your item now.
I pulled it right after the second having a motion.
You want to make a second, there's still a motion and you can still have the discussion.
Item 11, 12, 13, 15, 17, 18 and 19. A motion was made for those and seconded immediately from, by Mayor Proton.
I made the motion, I made the second.
You made the second, I'm so sorry. Please vote on those items.
Who's on first?
No, no, everything's good.
If it's going to be withdrawn after a motion is seconded, then, then the two would have to agree. The second motion would have to reconsider.
But a second wasn't made in time before, look.
Obviously, he wants the motion, so I'll go ahead and recuse mine, okay?
Well, okay.
Okay, so he made the motion, or he made the motion, he seconded.
He made the motion.
Motion and second, so there you go, just for the record, city clerk.
So we just want to discuss on number 16.
There you go.
Mr. City Attorney, if somebody makes a motion and somebody interjects with, with the request for discussion, that needs to be honored before any, any second can be considered, okay? You know that, you know that.
Yes.
So it's not like, yeah, so.
It's parliament procedure, so you need to look that up with the city clerk's office.
Please vote on those, with the exception of 14 and 16.
I don't have a vote for.
Then I'm going to make a motion on 14 separate.
Did I push?
I, no.
Oh, I didn't?
Oh, there, there it goes.
Okay.
There it goes, okay. Okay, the vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
And I would like to make a motion on item 14.
Second.
Since that was discussed already. Please vote. A second. Uh, I made the motion, I think who seconded it? All right. Councilwoman Valentine seconded it. Okay.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, Mr. Rambo.
Hey.
What do you got for us today?
Um, just to, I guess, Mr. Patterson mentioned it a little bit, just in regards to the telehealth van continuing. In Hawthorne, we reduced it price down, obviously per van. I don't know if you received that, Mayor.
No, no, just keep going.
But ultimately, just talking about continuing the service, there's a lot of families that's been used to the telehealth van based on the number and the data that we brought you in the past before, before things paused. And wanted to talk about, really started to incorporate more of the things that the county is interjecting in the city, such as 988 and things like that, that a lot of the homeless population, et cetera, do not have access to. It's just other additional things at the telehealth venue, you as a city have already kind of positioned yourself to offer these services for free to your residences. But that's what I'm here for now and of course, the homeless numbers are increasing, especially now with me becoming an LA commissioner, LA County Commissioner. I'm prone to all this information, so I can't wait to bring more resources to the city. But I'm open for any questions, more specific questions or strategies or ideas you guys may have.
I have a question for the city manager through the chair.
Yeah.
Um, what, what was, how much did we spend on the service last fiscal year?
I think you mentioned it earlier, we're close to half a million dollars. At one point, Mr. Rambo was offering diversion. We took that back and we were able to lower the price for last fiscal year.
All right, everybody good?
I have a question.
Okay, go.
Just real quick.
She was actually wanting to speak.
I, I just want to thank you for your services that you're providing to the city of Hawthorne. I've received calls from community members and folks that are saying how the efforts that we've made just to address the issue from the very beginning in 2020 was instrumental. Folks are, you know, were very hard on us, saying that we weren't doing enough. This shows the collaboration that we're making, not just with your organization, but other organizations and efforts that we're doing to just get people housed, more importantly, to get our city cleaned up. And that's what's important to me, so I just want to say thank you. I hope that you'll continue to address the homeless issues that we have sporadically. It's not, it's, it's better, but I know you're going to do that and I know that you're taking requests from us on which locations those are so that you could better serve those areas. So thank you so much, that's all I needed to say.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
That's it. A couple more comments?
Yeah, some questions, yeah. So I, thank you for, thank you for your service to the city, appreciate it. Question for you about the homeless, did I hear you say the number of homeless were increasing?
Oh, no, I'm speaking from a county-wide.
County.
Okay, not here in Hawthorne.
From a county standpoint, no, no, no.
Well, what, what do the numbers look like in Hawthorne?
Hawthorne, I'm not sure about the true data of Hawthorne. We deal a lot with, obviously Supervisor Mitchell, because you guys fall under that jurisdiction. In regards to the numbers of Hawthorne, we don't have the exact numbers of where you guys are with it. The only data that I have is the information that either when they come to the van, that the number is just based on the district, I think District 2, Council District 2, which is where Ms. Mitchell's in, you guys follow that? But other than that, we don't have the exact data numbers.
Is there some way that you can capture the Hawthorne, the number of people in Hawthorne that you service?
Yeah, you mean from a general standpoint or just from the telehealth van itself? The telehealth van itself, I gave you the numbers for the general numbers of the data. But are you saying from a, just a citywide, would you look, would you like for me to look into just where you guys are from a citywide standpoint, numbers?
County.
Well, I'm, I'd like to know what this, I'd like to know, what I'm interested in is finding out basically the impact that you're having on the homeless population in Hawthorne. I want to know, you know, what, what you're, what you're seeing.
Yes.
As far as the numbers, are you seeing a reduction?
Yes.
Are you seeing an increase? I'd like to know, I, where they're coming from, if you're seeing an increase and, and are, over time, are, are, over time, what services are you providing that make the biggest?
Right.
Impact?
I love those questions.
I'm interested in, in seeing what's going on in Hawthorne.
I understand.
As opposed to just the county, I want to see what's going on in Hawthorne.
Right, I understand. That's a really good question, because the thing that the telehealth van does is it becomes kind of a thermostat of what's happening in the community. When there's, so the data that I have for you, that's the most specific and the most accurate from being in Hawthorne, like I think we're the only mobile unit that does this every single day here in Hawthorne, is the data that I gave to you two months ago, which I can update and do again for you if you want. But what that data showed.
I would like an update, yes.
Okay.
Please.
Um, I think I stopped since then, though. But what the data, what the data showed, though, was it showed when the person came, because I think you wanted that more specifically back then, which is what we worked on, which is if Alisa comes to the van, what happens? You know, what was the result of Lisa? You know, did she go to a BHS? You know, did we just kind of give her information on where a food bank was, et cetera? So I have that data that I gave to you, but I'll re-give it to you again. And that data just showed where your residents came, you know, which van they came to, right? Because sometimes we are parked at DMV, et cetera. So where they, where helped and then what happened at the end of their.
And are you continuing to keep data on what happens to them after they leave?
We haven't yet, not after they get their help. So for example, if we send them to BHS, one of your BHS clinics or a BHS therapist or something, when they, when they log into those, we do not continue that. It's from a compliance standpoint. So we don't really have the information on Lisa to constantly call about Lisa because we're not really licensed as an actual therapist who follows that. For example, some people come who are undocumented. They may not give their real names, but they still receive the same type of support and help. It's the same as 988. They might not give us their real name, which we don't push them on. And one of the things that we kind of learned from dealing at the city, you're the first city we've ever done this with. So one of the things we actually learned too was how not to ask certain questions that you, we would deem as important, they think, they looked at it as a trigger. You know, one of the questions that BHS and the Sharpen, the other ones in your area wanted to know, for example, is kids or shelters, right, LASSA. We were sending people to shelters at LASSA, so they'd come up because they're running from an abuser when they were living at your hospital. They would come up, they're running from an abuser. We try to send them to LASSA and LASSA wants to know if they have kids. Well, we noticed that when we asked that or something like that, they have kids, it created this trigger. So we learned things like that as we did it. Like I said, you're the first city we've ever done this with, which is why we're open to creative criticism and what we can do, which, Mr. Patterson, feel free to call me anytime and I'll do what I can. I'm, I'm very open about my opinion as well, what we're learning, because we're being impacted straight. So, you know.
So are you seeing in Hawthorne an increase or a decrease in the homeless people that come to you?
I, I can't answer if it's, because I don't know the overall number as a data in the whole. I know when they come to the van, we increase our services to make sure that no one's turned away. But in terms of the overall numbers, we don't have that data of what the, what the city is as a homeless. Now, I can say that we've started seeing kind of clusters of homeless start to gather. I'm not sure if they're coming from different places coming to Hawthorne, like off of, I think Prairie near the freeway.
What do you mean when you say clusters?
Um, encampments, encampments. Meaning like, so off of Prairie and Imperial, I think we first started with you. Caltrans, that's like a weird area, because we used to park there. And Caltrans started, I think when we first came, we were working with the chief and everything here. They started to clean that stuff up, Caltrans did, I think they're all back now. So we're starting to see encampments like that start to build, like the small communities. We're unsure if they're already located in Hawthorne and they're just kind of coming there or if they're, you know, if, if they're coming from different parts of the state, which is what we're seeing, right? A lot of people move to these areas, or Inglewood's pushing them out towards the Hawthorne area.
So when you think in terms of, of your success, how do you measure that? How do you measure success for what you're doing?
We've been evolving. I think success is lasting, right? We got a call from the US government for us to continue taking care of Afghani's. We're the only person, we're the only vans in the history on US military bases, right? And they just called us last week to now take care of all of California. So I think for us, success is really just lasting, no one else is doing it. So my form of success isn't from a monetary standpoint and trying to be a large. It's just until someone else can do it, we're here, we're the only ones doing it.
No, when I say success, I'm talking about in terms of impacting the numbers of homeless people. We, we, we're not trying to increase the numbers of homeless, we're trying to decrease them.
Right.
And what, and, and how do you measure your success at impacting the homeless so that they find, they find shelter somewhere?
Yeah.
Or they, or they, or they, they find mental health or, or.
I think, can I just interject real quick?
They, they find mental, they find mental health facilities or drug health facilities. How, how do you measure?
Well, success for me personally as the creator is can we find the partners and resources to help them? That's success for me, right? So for example, the reason we have a full-time person doing medical insurance there is because we were sending them places that would only keep them for a day or two, because they didn't have medical insurance. So that was like us working with Covered California to figure that out. So to me, success would be if someone walked up, can we incorporate, can we find the resources that are local that'll take them in and take care of them? So to me, that's a form of success. And the only way we can track that right now is when Lisa walks up, what happened when Lisa left? You know, do we connect her to someone? In fact, if Alisa walks up, while she's standing there, we'll get on the phones or the local resource operator and try to find where to put her before telling her to come back tomorrow or something like that. So for me, success is if you walk up to the van, we want to make sure that every single person is treated with every single resource that we have available for us. And that's why we've been evolving. So I, I hope that answered your question, but we've been doing this now, I think this month makes two years. We've evolved into what we've evolved into. But all we're doing is just every time the county brings resources, we're trying to apply them into the van. So if Lisa walks up, like, like I told you before, syphilis is a big thing right now by 800%. So we're looking for medical support and where to send them to when they walk up and have these, these, these illnesses as well. So that's what success does. Now, I would love to work with the city. One of the things I did want to talk to you all about was this, if, as we continue, is come up with a way where as a city, you're the first city doing this, is maybe we can come up with a data-based something by the city of Hawthorne that kind of shows where things are, how things are happening, that other cities can kind of duplicate as, as a template. Be it if they use the telehealth van or not, but showing we have to put these mobile resources in hard-to-hit, hard-to-reach areas. And maybe we can work together of creating that data for the different surrounding cities that are trying to figure out what to do. Right now, you're the only city doing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll do the chair, I did have a question. Mr. City Manager, it's kind of, this, believe me, is related. Do we have relationships with any other entities or spend any kind of money for homeless outreach artists to, to support the homeless population?
Yes, we do. We do have a homeless division. We do have one homeless service coordinator that is a partner with St. Margaret's. And we actually, actually also have an individual from the whip that does assist us with homeless services.
And I, I know telehealth van is not specifically aimed at the homeless population, but I know that it's probably a good amount of the people that come to the van probably are experiencing some type of homelessness. I, I was wondering, is it possible to have all these individuals, these, these resources kind of work together? Telehealth van can work with some of these other resources that we have and, and kind of focusing more and provide more support for, to the homeless population?
Well, for me, we actually started that way. I think we worked with your, I think you had two at the time that was in the memorial center. So we actually worked with two at the time. They're super overwhelmed, because they're trying to work in the memorial center, taking care of the people who come and then they're trying to go out. So what we did is we decided to take a lot of their packages that, I think they were care packages, something like that, that had the things in it and help them. And this is why, actually, that's why we came up with, we needed to hire a full-time medical insurance person to take the weight off of them, because they were trying to send them, I think, to St. Joseph's or something to get their medical insurance as well. And incorporated us making sure that they had their IDs, which is why we print out in the van. When they come up and they need medical insurance, as you all know, we put the information in and print out the paper so they can actually take with their medical information or their, a piece of paper that they can take with them to get medical insurance, to get some help. So we actually started with them, but they've been overwhelmed with everything that they're trying to do just individually. But I'd love to team with them.
Yeah, I mean, given the fact that, that, that those groups of people are overwhelmed, if you can kind of help support.
We do.
Their, their efforts. And I don't know specifically what to do on a daily basis, I apologize, it's not an area that I've educated myself on. But I know that we do, we do have some personnel that are devoted towards supporting the homeless population, help them to find housing and get whatever, whatever resources that they might need. Given the fact that you're out in the community, you know, you kind of see where the encampments are, see where, you know, groups of people are. You know, it'd be great if, you know, you could really work in partnership with, with our, our homeless coordinator to, to provide greater support to our homeless population. Because I, I agree with councilmember Valentine, we definitely want to reduce the amount of homeless, not through kicking them out of the city, but through helping get them on their feet and whatever way that you can help support in that process, that'd be great.
We'll make more of an effort in that case. And next time I give you the data, I'll include that, you know. How many come from them? We become kind of an outreach arm to them. So I'll put that in the data more that we're working directly with things. And there might be some other resources that you guys have too, that you can let me know and we'll try to tie them in and let you know how it works together.
And can you also put in the data Hawthorne-specific information as much as possible?
I will. I'll, I'll try to drive down more about what the numbers are, what they were, et cetera. Okay.
All right, so let me, so I guess it's my turn then, unless Councilwoman Val, English. So I, I heard about the data aspect. I think that we can have more solid data. We got to ask ourselves, I know we're asking that of Mr. Rambo and the telehealth program, but in reality, what kind of solid data do we have from our, even from our own efforts? So the, the data that I guess we could use would be the daily, the yearly homeless count, has that number reduced, et cetera? The number of cases that we've, that we have with regards to people that we have logged into our system with regards to the homeless, like you have a profile for each person? Because they're known, they're known entities, they're known people, right? So I mean, I think if we do that, we just have to define it for Mr. Rambo as to what kind of data we're asking him to have. If we just can't have him ask, give us some data, give us some data, we have to define it. Mr. City Manager, is that something you could?
Absolutely. I think one thing we're missing, Mr. Rambo just doesn't service homeless individuals.
Okay.
So I think that's where the correlation that we have to figure out, if you want him to just focus on homeless individuals or people that are having mental, mental health issues, that have a home, that have a family, but they're reaching out to Mr. Rambo for mental help. I think, you know, that's the correlation that we're missing here.
Yeah, the, the most, we did start it with the mental health side, you know, and it went into the mental illness, et cetera. The people, the population that we were receiving were unhoused, which is why we started working more with Lhasa and Hoppix and stuff. I think you guys know that every single van, an hour before the van goes out, they make phone calls to find out how many beds are available near that. And as you know, there are not a lot of beds in your city. And, you know, you almost have to go out to Long Beach. So we're looking for that every day. So the, the most that we do when it comes to the homeless side is we find out how many beds are available that day, because the Lhasa website's obviously not always on point or clear. So, but we'll be interested in opening up more homeless ways of thinking as well. As long as, the, one of the things that your, your police department and members did very well that, that really helped us is they showed us where to go. They showed us, you know, the best places to sit, where to go. They protected us as we sat there, because we still have 5G technology, right? This is really good technology. It's as locked in as it could be, but the mental illness is a little bit getting worse on the street. So working with your police actually truly gave us the support that we needed and we felt like we were working as a team. And we do feel like we're working as a team if they know that they could use us more often.
Councilmember Montero.
Through the chair, if we, if we do approve this agreement contract, if we can get direction on what type of service we want Rambo House to provide to the city, that'll give me clarity as I work with Mr. Rambo on moving forward with his services. If we want him to focus on homeless needs, I just need direction on that item versus true wraparound services or the mental health services for the community.
Would you, sir, would you be prepared to go either route?
Of course. I mean, it's, it's a van that's utilized for the city. If we want to lean it towards the homeless population, it's still the same team that's in there. We'll just make stronger calls, Mayor, in those areas.
Yeah, I would like to, I think that's a good idea to, to have telehealth vans focus on the homeless population. And of course, you know, not turn anybody away, but, and also keep a good roster of some of the nonprofits that we have in the city that do provide some mental health support, that you can make, continue to make those referrals. But I, I think that'd be a good idea to try to, let's try to focus on the homeless population a little bit and see, see how that goes.
Let me ask you a quick question. When you say the homeless population, are you looking at to find them housing? Are you looking at them to have more mental resources with, with the, you know, what's considered, what's considered a success?
The gamut of things for the homeless population.
Okay.
Referrals, placement, all of it.
Got it. So we'll create in the data, the new data that we'll add, we'll make a data based on homeless, just, and we just create the other tiers of where they went, if they came up as homeless. Homeless is tricky, because what we found is as telehealth van is, when they're living in encampments, it, it becomes like this community, as you know, and they become very locked together. The only time they truly run away out of the encampment, excuse me, is if they're running from an abuser or they're dealing with addiction or they're trying to find their kid. So I'll create that with you. And then as a, as a partner, maybe we'll come up with, how do we make sure that, you know, no one's left behind? That is most people to say, but I'm speaking about this because we deal with it every day. We're sitting at a boardroom table trying to figure out how to make sure people are kept a service. Behavior Health Services is one of the strongest partners that you guys have in the city. You just happen to have the addiction powerhouse in the city that can take a lot of the homeless and put them into homes, taking care of their addiction and taking care of their kids. So I think we should really use the telehealth vans too, to truly, to truly strengthen the resources that you guys already have.
And even on that same subject though, I know not all the homeless in Hawthorne are in encampments or even on the street. I know there's a number of homeless people sleeping in their cars, which I'm sure could, you know, would be open to not sleeping in their cars. I remember, shoot, I think it's 2018 when I was running for reelection for treasurer, like the night before election day, putting my business card on cars. And I hope that's, that was legal, but put my business card on cars the night before. And I was surprised at how many people were sleeping in their cars.
We get a lot of those. We have a lot of people who pull up.
So there's a number of people that definitely need support.
Yeah.
Through the chair, Mr. Rambo, that's one of the things that is critical is about the homeless, okay? Because I drive and walk this city almost 24/7, okay? When I see your van parked over here or at DMV, but those are not the location that you're going to find these transients, these homeless individuals that is on 118 and Hawthorne Boulevard.
Right.
Is on Yukon and, and, and Imperial or under the freeway or is sleeping on the hometown buffet building that has been vacant or in front of business on Hawthorne Boulevard, 99 cent store. So all these areas.
Yeah.
I would like to see that van go to these areas.
Okay.
Not to be parked for eight hours or four hours in one location, waiting for somebody to walk in.
Right.
Okay, I want to see that van to go to this intersection, these places that I see homeless every day, right? Especially right now on 118 and Hawthorne Boulevard. It started with a two, now there's six, okay? So we need to reach out to this individual. And it's not just mental health, but also connect them to service that is going to find them a shelter or maybe a temporary home, right? And, and I understand about that you just do referrals. But one of the things that I keep insisting is to see if you can come up with a system that will check with behavioral health service. We check with the, with the county, we check with some magistrates or, or church. They went there for food, they went there for medical service. They went there to apply for housing or sectionate, whatever. So we need that particular item, because when you see homeless, it's not just one issue.
Right.
It's 10 issues, right? So, so, and then it's what, I want to see that van goes around, not be stationary at the DMV or in front of City Hall, just waiting there for a miracle to happen. So I want to see the go around.
Got it. Perfect.
That, that's number one thing that my concern is. Like I said, I drive this city every single day, 24/7, even four, five o'clock in the morning. Okay, and I see what's happening. And I want to see that van.
I'll incorporate, I'll incorporate more of a, of a homeless push.
Sir, okay, so I just appreciate you being up here. And I think, picking back in on what my colleague said, I, I guess the word is, we need, we need to ensure that your, your, your operation is active, not passive.
Got it.
Okay, that's really what the key word is here, where they're actually going out and searching for the, the known sites, whether it's along the freeway, along whatever, along 120th, whether the places that he mentioned, we find the Ralph supermarket or near the medical center over there, certain parts of Monita Gardens, et cetera.
Inglewood Avenue.
Inglewood.
Is it okay, Mayor, if?
Let me just, let me just.
I'm sorry. Okay.
So, and then the other thing is the data aspect that we're talking about. That's what I guess maybe, just what, that's why I'm asking, give me a little time to explain is that we do need the, we do need those results. How many people did you refer, actually went and got those services? So there needs to be a closed loop for us to be able to have data. One thing is to say that we told them where the stuff was and you don't know if they went or not. So then how, how impactful is that? So, Mr. City Manager.
You'll work with them.
Mr. City Manager, could you work with Mr. Rambo to define those locations? You need to be open, because it's not written down and it's not, you know, et cetera. You need to work with us on this with regards to just making sure that he knows exactly what areas he needs to target so that they could be going out and looking for people when it comes to the homeless aspect and come up with the data, like some closed-loop type of system where he can get, like did this person actually go and follow through with getting the food or getting the medical services? That's how we know if they're being served. We need, we're data-driven.
I understand.
You know, we can't just do it just by a good feeling. So that's why I want to make a motion to support this.
Thank you, and I'll second.
Based on that recommend, those recommendations, but we need you to follow through, because periodically, we're going to be noticing how it's coming along. And then at the next review or whatever, we might say, you know what? But, all right, please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
And as I mentioned, being data-driven is important. We need to see results. We need to show the community that the, that the things we're doing, spending the monies, et cetera. Even if it's ARPA-funded, we just need to show how everything's coming up.
Congratulations.
We do have members of the community that are concerned with the homeless issues. And they've come up to me and we need to make an impact and help these people.
And to the chair, Mr. Rambo, and don't be afraid to contact us or email us to ask for suggestions and ask exactly what, what we are looking for, right? Because we have an idea. So maybe we can help you guide the process, how you want to get to what we want to be accomplished.
Right.
Okay, so don't be afraid contacting us.
Okay, thank you.
Or the city manager, and I can send stuff to him. But like I said, you know, I'm, I've been willing to, to talk to you. Because like I said, I, I have done healthcare, I have done case manager. So, and I, and I understand.
You see it, okay.
How things work, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
The city attorney's consent calendar is going to be read through the Madam Clerk.
Item 20, deny, claim of Silvino Perez for monetary damages. Item 21, deny, petition of Maximiliano Serrano for leave to submit a late claim for damages. Item 20, deny, claim of Aaron Bishop for personal injuries. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 20 through 22, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
No, the, the motion was, you had the motion, Mr. Mayor Proton. Anybody, would you like to second that, Councilwoman?
Second.
Okay, yeah, all right. Motion by the Mayor Proton and second by Councilwoman Valentine. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
All right, so we have a recommendation from our councilmember colleague Montero. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, you know, the idea came from Ms. Valentine about giving the staff a bonus because of the Centennial project was so exciting. All the Centennial event celebration that we did, the staff put a lot of hours. So instead of giving monetary money, it's just to give them a day off. Since the Labor Day, the Labor Day weekend.
Sir, ma'am, can you go address that, please? Can you please address that, ma'am, very solidly? We can't have that happen here.
Thank you.
Who's that?
What happened? I don't know.
I don't know, somebody. So the Labor Day is on September 5th. And the Friday before, that's going to be September 2nd. So I wanted us to give that Friday off to the staff so they'll have a four days weekend. So from the 2nd to the 5th. So if I can have a motion on that, and I appreciate it. I'll make a motion and you can.
You want to make a motion? I'll make a second.
No, I made the motion.
Did you repeat the, I'm sorry, that, that's, I'm sorry, that kind of just distracted me.
Yeah, so basically, it, it is to celebrate our Centennial, right? Staff dedicate a lot of time and effort and it was an outstanding parade, outstanding dinner, outstanding block party. All the event was so successful, but it was thanks to the staff. So, and Ms. Valentine did, said that we should have give some of the public work and the staff a bonus. But I think maybe one day off and for them to have a four-day weekend. Labor Day is on the 5th of September. So to give them that Friday, September 2nd off, so they'll have four days weekend for the Labor Day.
You made a motion, I'll second.
I made a motion.
Is that a?
For clarification, is that for just this year or for permanent?
No, that's this year.
It's this year. Just want to make sure.
Labor Day 2022.
2022.
2022.
Maybe next year, if I'm here, I'll make another motion. But this year for 2022.
Mayor, did I hear you say every time we have a parade, we have a holiday?
Let's just stick to this stuff right now, man.
Last day for one year at a time, right? Okay, so I made a motion, Ms. English second, so I will vote.
Vote.
Thank you.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Valentine, for the idea.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, could you? Okay, city discussion, discussion from elected officials report. Start off with our city treasurer.
Good evening, everybody. That was a good meeting. Yeah, it's interesting to hear about that Prop 19. That really took a lot of people by surprise. I do a lot of tax work, but it was sold as like, you know, help the fire and you can transfer your, when you're over 55, your property tax all over. And then there was that little bit at the end about, you know, not being able to transfer it to your children. And that, there was also another measure back when California, because, you know, it's a California's propositions, where they had a thing on gay marriage way back. And I think it got approved to outlaw it, but everyone had it backwards. You know, I think when they were voting, possibly, I don't know, it was surprising. But yeah, that's the funny thing about these propositions in California. And what was the other, just kind of going, but one good news about that is if property taxes do go up, actually the city will get more money. I mean, I don't want, I don't want that group on me, you know? I'm not trying to say I approve it, okay? I'm not, I'm not going against Prop 13. But, you know, one, one good thing about the, the property tax thing, the way they got it going here is, you know, it would probably help the city revenue. It would also really help the state revenue mostly, but every little bit helps. Yeah, just continuing to work on setting up that, this parse thing to see if we can invest some money more strategically for retirement funding down the road and just continuing to grow, you know, the assets and invest as best we can. And then, you know, I'm going to wait, you know, till the, the city charter and all that. But that, that, if that does go through, that could probably have an impact on how we do our, you know, treasury management and our investment reports and that. It might add a little more flexibility in, in different things. So that's something to look at if it gets passed. Thank you all. Cheers.
Madam Clerk, is there any, any news from the city clerk's office?
Just a reminder that the nomination period ends on this Friday, August 12th at 5:00 PM. If you haven't returned your paperwork yet, please make an appointment. City Hall is closed on Friday, but we will be here, so.
Can you provide those times that you're going to be here on Friday, please?
We will be here on Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
To the, to the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can I just give a, a direction to your office to assure that whoever is applying for candidacy for either council or any other position, that they have their actual physical address where they reside here in Hawthorne and that it's not a business? I think that's very important. And I want to make sure that the city clerk's office is readily available and knowledgeable when it comes to what's required of a candidate. They must live, reside here in Hawthorne and have a physical address. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valentine?
Thank you. As I stated at the last council meeting, it has been my pleasure to work with Jackie Bakarak and the South Bay COG to bring the South Bay Fiber Network to 15 cities in the South Bay in 2020. This is a network that can be the underpinning to making us a smart city. Now we are working on the next phase, getting the service into the interior of the cities. The COG has recently applied to the California PUC for their grant called the Local Agency Technical Assistance Grant. If awarded, it will assist all of the cities to. If awarded, it will assist all of the cities to expand broadband to be able to provide residents and businesses with fast, reliable broadband. For the residents and businesses, this means supporting telework, telehealth, digital learning, and workforce training, critical digital resources for our community. I will keep you posted as to the progress of this grant application, but we are certainly going to benefit from it if it gets approved. I want to congratulate the staff on the employee handbook, and I, I believe it was Allison Stevens who particularly worked on this, along with, I think the lady who was the former H R manager. Do, her name was?
Christina?
Christina Tomoguchi. I know this is a labor that is years in the making and absolutely essential. All employees will know what behavior is expected of them and their superiors. This will hopefully create an atmosphere of trust and accountability in the workplace because everyone will know what is expected of them. Congratulations on the employee handbook. This is a big deal. I also want to congratulate the H P D. on its recruitment incentive plan. Hopefully this will work. I know we are, I know the H P D. is having problems, as is, as are all police departments with recruitment. And so I want to thank you for going forward and making a recruitment incentive plan, and we certainly will work with you to make sure it's successful. I want to thank the, I want to thank the staff for having the pilot program of pickleball at Ramona Park, which I have had so much fun this summer playing. Each Saturday, the, the, the number of people grows, the number of families grow. The program was only supposed to run through July. However, it was well received and we did extend it through this coming Saturday. So I want to thank those of you who came out to participate. And I am going to direct the City Manager to look into the feasibility of it becoming a permanent sports program. I'd like to see it in Ramona Park, if possible, because Ramona Park is where people are coming. They expect to have it, to play it there, and I would like to see it there. But I definitely would like to see it, see it become a part of the city's sports program. And, if that's all. Oh, with the, I want to thank Susan Shelley for coming out and, and talking to us about the impact of Proposition Nineteen. And I would, at this time, ask if the City Council, I'd like to move that we work with the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association to support the repeal of Proposition Nineteen.
I'll make a second.
That, it hasn't been agendized, that's not something that the City Council can take in action.
Can't do it this time?
Let's add it to the next agenda.
The next council meeting as an agenda item.
That's fine.
He's asking for consensus, so I'm cool, I'm good with that.
Can we get consensus?
I don't know if I'm.
No, there's, there's specifically under the Brown Act, when you're taking an action on a vote, it has to be agendized as an action item, so.
That's true.
But we can't just override that here, it's a state law.
Alright. Can we take it up at the, can we take it up at second, at the first meeting in September? Because I will not be here for the next City Council meeting, in the last City Council meeting in August.
Yes, you can give that direction, and staff will follow.
Can we, can we put that on the agenda for the City, the first City Council meeting in September? Thank you.
Can I maybe add to that? I, I said I would support it, I would be willing to do that. I mean, if there's a letter that we could write to the Jarvis Institute to let them know where our stance is at, I, I would direct staff to go ahead and do that. Thank you.
I believe it's going to be targeted to the state legislature, or whoever needs to go to the impacted.
They can let us know.
Right.
They could direct us.
Done? Everything good?
They can give us a. Yes.
Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to the folks that come in tonight. We saw a lot of residents, thank you for coming tonight. There was a lot of, from all over the place, from Holly Park to Ramona neighborhood in the north Hawthorne, so thank you for coming out. First, I want to congratulate the Police Department and the Parks and Recs for the National Night Out. It was a very successful event, so thank you very much. And I know you guys have been busy, you know, doing stuff for the community, and I'm pretty sure Mayor Protem will talk about the Basketball Clinic that you guys did at the Memorial Center, so that's very good. Also, I want to congratulate the Hawthorne Historic Society for the annual Hall of Fame Induction Banquet that they did on Saturday night. You know, five people were inducted to the Hall of Fame. My favorite mom, Ms. Darlene Love, Coffee with a Cup, the Associate Jose Martin, and Mike Galaski, one of the coach, and also even our one hundredth centennial got a certificate of induction to the Hall of Fame. So they did a fantastic job, and the food was good at the Eras Hotel, so thank you very much. Coming up, the Lions Club is going to have a day of free vision screening and free recycled glasses, like you can go there, they will take your measurement of your eyes and give you free glasses, okay? So Saturday, August twenty-seven, eight A M. to two P M. at the Hawthorne Memorial Center Sun Room. So Saturday, August twenty-seven, eight to two P, to two P M., free vision screening and free glasses. Of course, those are all recycled glasses. And there's a quick reminder that the Second Annual Wolf Fest is going to be on September seventeen, Saturday, September seventeen, from ten A M. to six P M. And you know, last year, we had a lot of fun on the Wolf Fest, so it's going to be September seventeen. Again, we're looking for vendors, for food trucks, ethnic groups, you know, arts and crafts, so just contact the Parks and Recs, and you can be, apply to be a vendor on that event. I want to give a directive, and I want you guys to support. Because this gentleman has come a lot of times to City Hall, and he has contacted me, talked to me. He lives on the Cranbrook Avenue. He would like to see the tea parking, you know, underground, because he said he works for a delivered truck company. He comes home early, you know, dawn, and people, you know, takes two parking space. He cannot find parking. So he's pleading for us to begin that tea parking on his street, the Cranbrook Avenue side. And I know we need, we did the pilot project, it's been very successful. And I think if there is any money out there, Mr. City Manager and the public works, to do it citywide, tea parking, I will bless you, say thank you, Jesus.
I agree.
I concur.
Yep.
Okay? So please do that, because I think it's needed all over the city, the tea parking. And I think it's been very successful. So, and I hear the concur, yes, yes, yes?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Alright, so on that note, have a good night, and God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. So, Councilwoman Angie Race English?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'll be real quick and brief. Thank you, City Manager, for the Staff Appreciation Luncheon taking place tomorrow at noon. Appreciate that. I also want to thank our interns that are sitting to my left. We see you, thank you so much for all that you're doing to help us along, especially in the City Clerk's Office. I know some, some of the minutes are delayed, but that's because we had a staff shortage and still recovering. But thank you so much for just everyone's help and efforts with regards to getting us back on track. Congratulations to the young woman that, I believe it's the scholarship recipient, right, for Holly Park? And I didn't get her name, but I, I just want to congratulate her. Yeah. I also want to just commend the efforts on behalf of Telehealth Van to addressing our homeless and just to continue in that, including all those other organizations that assist us, whether it's, you know, Saint Margaret's, whether it's, you know, LASSA, just the number of assistance that we get in our city. We are a small city, and it is very obvious when we have homeless encampments that need to be addressed. And again, it's for referrals and placement, and that's what we strive and hope for by collaboration with all these other groups and organizations that are making the same efforts in other cities. And I, I just like the fact that we have a designated van that addresses our needs. So that's important. Let's see here, just real quick. To the Jarvis Institute, thank you for bringing that Prop nineteen to our attention, and just explaining, you know, the whole process and what occurred. And like I said, I think folks are tired of being taxed. I think we are heavily taxed here in the state of California to continue to be taxed over and over again and not provide any relief to residents that are suffering, can't drive because the gas is too high and they're not willing to appeal some of the gas taxes for a moment, a period of time, to provide us some help. I'm taxed out, I'm sick of taxes, just like I'm done with mandates. So I'm glad, I'm glad that we're working to bring a new to our city of Hawthorne, and that's what I'm going to keep striving for, is to bring resources and programs, and more importantly, things that matter most to families. And that includes businesses and anything else. And, you know, a lot of folks really don't know me, they think they do. I've been doing this for a number of years. I do it because I enjoy what I do, but more importantly, I'm very experienced and I know what I'm talking about. And so that's important to me, just getting the work done. It might not be popular to most, but I know where other cities are prospering from those same entities that are trying to come here. So, again, I think it was a good meeting, it's a good discussion. That's what we're all about when it comes to addressing your concerns here at the, at the dais. But I'm going to continue to push, and I'm going to continue to bring about change. Our city's been too sta, too much stagnant, and there's nothing going on, empty properties. There's no restaurants, there's no malls, there's no entertainment of any sorts for our, for our children, for our families. We have to go outside of the city to get our services or programs and other things that, that basically brings joy to a family, whether you're going out to eat, going to a movie, going to purchase clothing. I mean, there's nothing here in our city, and I keep hearing it in every time I get calls and emails from individuals, and, and families that continue to live here. They, they want to see us prosper, they want to see them prosper through services and programs and brick and mortar stores, restaurants, et cetera. So, again, I'm going to keep pushing, I'm going to keep pushing, I'm going to continue to fight. And again, it's, it's, it's my passion, and I just hope that you would take the opportunity to talk to me, get to know me, versus always trying to attack me. But that's okay. Have a good night, everyone.
Mayor Protem?
I want to first thank the community for coming out and making your voices heard, and coming out to the council meeting and witnessing this great debate live. And also just commend those that are at home watching this online or on Channel twenty-two. Just appreciate you participating in this process. I want to thank staff for all your, your hard work that you guys do. You guys have to, you know, bear the brunt of the crazy demands of, of the council and complaints from the community, so definitely appreciate your hard work. I, let's see. I do want to thank the interns for your, for your hard work and your contribution to the city. I know we had a couple, or at least I asked the City Manager to assign a couple interns to help with a PowerPoint presentation for a presentation idea for the South Bay Association of Realtors, along with the mayor, a couple weeks back, and they did a great job putting together a PowerPoint for me. I know some of the things that were, that were part of the PowerPoint, they didn't necessarily have a background and had information, and they still, you know, put up my demands of, you know, making it look this way or sound that way. So I definitely appreciate that support. Over the weekend, we had a, early last week, I believe it was Monday through Saturday, we had a basketball academy that was sponsored by the Hawthorne Police Department. And I just want to talk a little bit about that. Couple of the individuals from Hawthorne Police Department, Sergeant Kenny Craig and Detective.
Shawn Kemp.
Shawn Kemp, right. Thank you. Had approached me last year saying that they really wanted to do all they could to help with they wanted me to give them some, some input on how they could be more effective in having more diversity in their recruitment. And so they were assigned to recruitment from Hawthorne Police Department, but also they were really took seriously my request that we, we increase the diversity in the police department. It's not many African Americans that work, that work for our police department. It could be the case for a lot of other police departments, but I know specifically, you know, Hawthorne, may, maybe a couple, and I think that the fact that the city of Hawthorne is probably a twenty-five percent African American, it probably should be more African Americans on the police department to kind of represent the community and the community's diversity. And they, they really, you know, took that request very seriously and reached out to me last year about different ideas of what they can do to help kind of reach out to the African American community specifically, and, and, you know, increasing that, that recruitment to the city of Hawthorne. And one thing that came up in that conversation is, it was their idea, they wanted to do some type of a regular basketball camp to build greater relationships with the, the youth in the city of Hawthorne, and let that be an avenue for them to be seen in a different light with the youth, and build better relations with the youth, and for that to kind of become a pipeline and them ultimately maybe seeing, being a Hawthorne police officer as a, as a potential career. And I thought that was a great idea, and, you know, you may or may not know this, but I don't know nothing about basketball, right? I barely watch it, never played organized basketball a day in my life. You know, I might watch the finals, right? You know, don't ask me to participate in the mayor's three-on-three, none of that. I don't do none of that, right? But I, I saw the, the value of doing, of doing that, so I reached out to somebody I know who has a lot of relationships in basketball, have some pro basketball affiliations, and connected that person with, with those officers with the police department. And they, they came up with this great idea of the, the basketball academy that they, they held last week. And it went very well, from what I hear, and was talking to, you know, both Kenny Craig and Detective Kemp, and they were just talking about how their relationships with some of these young men had transformed, of course, that week. There was a couple of young men that they had encountered out in the community, in not the most positive way, but through their, you know, connection with them or then experience with them through that academy, that those young men looked at them very differently, and the relationship had changed and transformed. And so I was very excited to hear that, you know, their ideal, you know, was a success, and it was well received by the, the young men and women in our community, because there were some women that participated in that, or young women that participated in that program as well. So it was great to see that, and that was a great success, and always happy to be able to support good ideas and, and helping our community grow and be better. Had a really good conversation with Sergeant, Sergeant Craig about our cannabis working committee, because he sits on that, on that working committee, and I asked him how has it been going for him? And he went on and on gushing about our, our consultants, which I, I didn't, which completely caught me by surprise. You guys may or may not know this, but Sergeant Kenny Craig, he was a, he was retired from corporate America before he came to the police department. He actually ran a company with hundreds of employees, has a tremendous amount of business experience as a C E O. before he became a police officer. And he said he's worked with hundreds of consultants, or it's thirty years in business. And he said he's probably the best consultants he's ever worked with in his entire history. So they are completely professional, on time, very engaged, very knowledgeable, experts at their craft. And it was just great, great to hear that about, you know, any of our, our consultants that we do business with, but it was great to hear that from such a accomplished business person like Sergeant, Sergeant Craig. And I asked him, you know, can I quote you on that? He said, yeah, by, by all means. So I want to, you know, let Councilmember Valentine, not Valentine, I'm sorry, English, know that I appreciate your hard work on that, that, that committee, and let the, the rest of the staff who was participating in that committee know that I appreciate your hard work, as well as the police department's participation, as well as our, our consultants who, who obviously, you know, know what they're doing and has been a great support to the city. And so definitely appreciate all of your hard work and what you guys have done. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Any go-bags? We're doing it now, we're not doing it after I say my stuff. Any go-bags, anything you think about? Because the famous go-vags. Alright, so, so I did hear some of the things that my. All right, so, so I did hear some of the things that my council member colleagues have said in their closing statement. I just want to address absolutely the gas tax. There's just too many taxes. People want to tax everything. They, now they want to tax properties, reassessed properties when you transfer it to your, to your siblings, to your family. And that's just totally wrong. I think it just seems sometimes like some of our legislators, when they get elected and when they go up to Sacramento, they want to just see, they just want to come up with pet projects that they, they have to find funding for in order to make an impact and to justify their existence up there. And I think that's totally wrong. And they're doing it at our expense. It's like a big old club that they're, you know, up there and they just want to impress everybody and just make a name for themselves. And the people who feel the brunt are, are us, the, the voters and the people who have to pay those taxes. Oh, but you have better this, better, no. If we're 47 in the country when it comes to education, some of our areas are, so we have a homeless issue. You know, we haven't been able to under, under, you know, what do you call it? Underwrite the living expenses of those who are homeless and et cetera. Then there's a problem. There's just a lot of pork out there. And I'm hoping that with our new assemblywoman and with our existing state senator, that it's not just, just talk, that we work with them and just help them just kind of go against the current, you know, for their parties or whoever's trying to, whoever is trying to push them in a different direction than in the benefit of the residents, right? So I think it's very important that that happens. So again, thank you, Councilwoman Valentine, for bringing the individual who spoke about the item, which was Proposition 19. It's just shameful. Like, I didn't know. I really didn't know. I think a lot of people here didn't know. Maybe a couple of us or whatever, but it's just sad that that would even be the case. You can't even try to like, you know, have, help your children's future, you know? And it's just, because they have to pay a penalty. It's like, but the state does it, right? When people pass away, there's a tax, people pay the state tax, all this other stuff. So it's kind of the death tax or whatever they call it. So Telehealth, thank you for, Mr. Ramble for coming. I did pull the item. I did, I wanted to talk about it because I think those two issues that I had mentioned, being able to target the homeless, have the, have the mission redefined and focused, okay? And then also the data aspect, you know, have like what they call, I guess the, we just want to see how they're impacting the community. And with a report of such nature, with that's database, we'll be able to see it. Even if it's, even if it's just kind of numbers, like how many people actually went. That piece of data, you know, not like how did, did they end up? We can't follow that person all the way through their life experience. You know, it's that, that'll cost too much money. That's just a case study. That's for like a university or for another, even our state agencies, our local LA county agencies can't, don't do that. That's just too extensive. But at least some minor data points that we could get just to see if people are following through. Because then we can say, hey, you know what? Any outreach, we can make the conclusion, the outreach that we have as a city that we're paying for as a community is actually having an impact. So yes, let's continue along this route, even though we don't have that long-term information. Or we're giving them the information and they're not even following through, going through their appointments or whatever, going through, you know, to getting these services, et cetera. So the thing is, we can make a separate conclusion based on that as well. There's a problem with these people refusing services. They're just kind of coming and not following through. That's another conclusion that we could take to come up with another alternate approach to be able to help them, right? All information will help us make these conclusions, right? So thank you to Mr. Ramble for listening to us. And yes, I did attend the South Bay Association of Realtors meeting with our mayor Protem, David Patterson. He prepared a wonderful slide presentation on the, on the real estate situation here in the city of Hawthorne. So thank you for a job well done, sir. And, and I was happy to join you in that discussion. Giving, I gave a little history about the, the land use in the city of Hawthorne, the different neighborhoods, et cetera, and just some questions that they had. But the mayor pretended the bulk of the presentation. So thank you again. The interns as well, I'd like to congratulate you. One of the things that, that I know that's very important, guys and gals, is that going to school is one thing. I teach a physics class right now. So I teach it in the morning. It's almost over. They have their final exam on Thursday. And one of the things, I talk to them. I just, I give them their subject. I give them the lecture, et cetera. But I always talk to them, try to give them some like advice based on what I'm seeing and what their intended course of study is and what they want to do career-wise. One thing is to be book smart. You can have an A plus, a 4.3, have awesome grades. But if you don't have that real life experience through an internship, that, through an internship like you guys have right now, this is equivalent to an internship, or have exposure to other people out there, interacting with other people in the field that you want to get into, you won't be successful. Because what good is being book smart if you don't have that experience and already kind of know what you're getting into or have, be able to speak the language, right? Being able to speak the language with those people that you want to join their ranks, right? So I think this is a, I'm excited that you guys are here with us. And I think this is a golden opportunity. Make sure you guys take advantage to the fullest. Because this is going to, it's going to be very good for you guys. So we're, we're lucky to have you. And I guess this was a great opportunity for you guys, right? So just thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Seriously, that, I really mean that. This is good for you guys and for us as well. the Mayor Protem did refer to our, to my basketball tournament that we already have a, when do we have it scheduled for? Huh? What happened?
Three minutes are too long.
My three minutes? All right, you can watch it from TV. Thank you for being here, Mr. Raddick. You can watch all our meetings from home. Thank you. All right, have a good night, sir. All right, all right. I guess maybe he's not happy the way some of the decisions went today. So that's okay. So.
What, three on three?
The three on three basketball tournament? And, you know, I guess now I know why you don't take up my challenge to take me on in basketball.
Yeah, I'll play the basketball.
You just solidified it. Oh, okay. I think he's just doing that because he probably anticipated me hitting him up again about. But I like basketball and I think that's a good opportunity for, for the different community groups, whether it's the police department, the fire department, the Moose Lodge, the Lions Club or whoever, the North Hawthorne, Ramona, whoever, to field a team so that everybody could be out there and interacting. Because sometimes, hey, think about it, you know, there's some community groups that are like, the cops and I don't know about them and, you know, they're suspicious and all this. But imagine being on the basketball court where you're playing against each other. You end up building a camaraderie and you build up a relationship, like, you know, sweating and playing basketball and et cetera, right? So I'll be out there. I'll be on a team. And I think the team is going to consist of, I'm going to be representing the City Hall team, right? Along with our city manager, Vaughn Norris, and our city attorney, Robert Kim, who are both basketball players. So. And so anybody else who wants to be like the extra two to substitute in and out?
I'm going to form a women's basketball team.
The city attorney, we're getting way too old for that.
I got some women PD that are at my back.
Past those years already.
I'm just going to sit on the sidelines while everybody else do it.
Real quick though, I, I, one thing I forgot to bring up though, community cleanup. We had a one last year after we started opening things up from COVID that I think was a great success. And I was hoping that we can do another one of those this year before the year is out, Mr. City Manager.
Note it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so I also listened to EJMA. I know that the, that there's a contentious, not contentious, it's a contentious issue, the cannabis, et cetera. You can look at it however. I just don't want the state to come in and just dictate their terms for what we need to do. It could get really messy if we don't establish something because there's just too many hawks, too many serpents out there. And so we just need to make sure we lay the foundations for that. And EJMA, the company that's working with us, I've been, I've been impressed by their, by their professionalism and their experience, whether, whatever experience people are referring to has served us well. And I guess you can speak for that and our city manager, our city attorney and community members that attended the meeting, et cetera. So I think I do agree, we need to have a cannabis, whatever the, if we're going to move ahead with the cannabis, it needs to be something that's away from the children, that's, that's not going to impact and seduce the children, our teenagers, our youth. And that people who are responsible end up choosing whether they're going to partake in cannabis use, just like people use and partake in alcohol use and either take that response, take drink responsibly or abuse of that. Or people who take medicine, certain medicines, they either take that responsibly or they abuse of different types of medicines. I think there's different types of abuse that can take place, whether it's with your own body or abusing of other people and the way you live your life. So it's everybody's responsibility to live healthy and make those healthy choices. Okay, so, but EJMA has been very professional. So I'm, exactly. I think it's very good that, based on their professionalism and their experience and the way they've been serving our, these committees, I think it'd be good to just listen to their recommendations and take them seriously. With the, with the feedback of the community, of course. So the, the last thing that I think I wanted to mention was that we, in the city of Hawthorne, enjoy a very strong relation with, relationship with our Islamic center here in the city of Hawthorne and our other two smaller mosques that we have here in the city of Hawthorne. And we are a very diverse city. Councilmember Montero, that's why he's having the World Fest, because we have people from all corners of the globe, all different religions, et cetera. So we just have so many people and our Muslim Islamic community is a member of that community. And they've been very involved in our community. They've had outreach to other community groups, to other churches. And I think that's a great thing. They trust their community there. They, they, we trust them and we respect them. But unfortunately, in Albuquerque, New Mexico, that wasn't the case. For the last six months, within the last six months, it's just very suspicious that four members of the Islamic community there have been targeted and killed coming out, like, like some random shooter shooting from a car or something. The details are being explained now. So I think it's highly suspicious. They're looking for a single car out there that's been present in all of those incidents. And I think we just need to simply pray that, that they find whoever's doing this and that, that there's peace and tolerance when it comes to dealing with people who are not like ourselves or people who believe in something different, you know? Just like we expect people to respect us, I think we should respect all others. And so we just simply need to pray for what's going on over there in New Mexico and just all over the world. So just, just a shout out to our Islamic center here that they know that, that we love them and they're part of our community, okay? That we celebrate them. So is there any, if there's nothing further from my, my council colleagues, this meeting is adjourned at 8:23.